All right, it is five thirty. If we could all stand for opening prayer, please? If we could all gather in a circle and grab hands, please.
You can leave behind the camera.
Hold on a second. I usually don't leave the camera, but.
Hold on, one second.
We will create a good place. We ask that you give us knowledge, wisdom, and understanding to do as best for our people. We welcome our guest here today with good hearts and open arms. Yes, if you want to protect us, bring us in guidance.
Thank you, Madison and Caff. All right, before we turn it over, we're going to open up the meeting first before we get into the joint meeting. Looking for a motion to convene this evening's National Open Ona Tribal Council meeting here on August ninth, twenty twenty-three, at forty-three Great North Road South, Mass Mass, six four nine. Motion by Madison Man at five thirty-one P M. Second by Chief Mills. Any discussion?
When on the clock, yes.
Domingo Texera, yes.
We find, yes.
Listen, yes.
This other experience, Roxanne Mills Brown, yes.
Earl Capdune, yes.
All right, unanimous, by all present. Max looking for a motion to accept an improvement in the National tribal council regular meeting agenda for August ninth, twenty twenty-three. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Secretary Jackson, second.
Second.
Second by Chief Mills. Any discussions?
Chip?
Yes.
I wanted to see, is that issue that I was referring to, tribal?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes. All right, any other discussions?
Yes, just, just follow up on our housing meeting the other day. Is that under operation?
That's under.
Okay, thanks, sir.
All right, anything else? Roll call, please.
When on the clock, yes.
Casa Jackson, yes.
Captain Henry. Domingo Texera, yes.
We find, yes.
Listen, yes.
This other experience, Roxanne Mills Brown, yes.
Earl Capdune, yes.
All right, looking for a motion to reassess the National tribal council meeting at five thirty-three P M for the joint meeting of the school committee. Motion? Motion made by Councilwoman Brown, second. Second by Councilwoman X. Three year. Any discussion? We will reconvene for the rest of the day, as well. Roll call, please.
Casa Jackson, yes.
Captain Henry. Domingo Texera, yes.
We find, yes.
Listen, yes.
This other experience, Roxanne Mills Brown, yes.
Earl Capdune, yes.
All right, we're now at recess. Turn it over to Kathy.
So it is five thirty-three, and I'd like to call to order the annual partnership joint meeting of the National Schools and National Open Tribe. Our first order is, you know, are we? We've been open already, so. Do you want me to go through like what I'm normal?
Sure.
All right, so, I guess we'll just go right to the landing acknowledgement, and the National Schools recognize the honor of many generations of Wampanoan people who have lived here, who live here and have been sustained in this territory for more than ten thousand years. So I guess, thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate and look forward to this joint meeting every year. It's a great opportunity for the school and you as council members to understand, you know, what we're working on for students, and, you know, what we're, what we're focusing on in projects and things that we are keeping in our forefront. I guess probably, I'm Kathy Lewis. I should probably introduce myself. I am in my fourth term, or fourth year on the school committee, first year of my second term. I'm the current chair. I grew up in Mashpee, so I consider this my home and love it here, and I'm very thankful for the opportunity again to be here, so. I work for the town of Chatham, and the school committee is my other passion, so, and I'll pass it to.
Matt Davis, I'm in my third year of my first term, so the end of it. I'm also the secretary for the school committee, and I'm in the Mass International Tribe on the outside.
Yeah, so this is the vice chair of the school committee.
I'm Patty for the Sprinter in Mashpee, and I'm very grateful to be here. I guess, you know, this opportunity, like I said, it's a great chance for us to share what we've been working on and what, and hear what also your concerns are in terms of Wampanoan students in the National Schools. You know, we acknowledge that you are very prevalent in our school district, and we want to make sure that what we're working on benefits all students, but also is able to help Wampanoan students feel seen, valued, and acknowledged, so part of that is, you know, what we're going to kind of talk about tonight, I think, you know, share out. I believe we have your share out listed first, so, and this is not necessarily school-related items, but anything you think the school district might benefit from knowing, and we as school committee members can inform policy, budget items, you know, anything that you think might help us understand how to better serve Wampanoan students in our school district. So I'll turn it over to, turn table over to you.
All right, tribal council, can we just introduce ourselves, and maybe the liaison duties that we might have, or roles, if you'd like.
Hi, Betty. I'm Xana. I'm X. Three year, tribal council, and I am also employee of the tribe, and I'm the head of school. School pre-K for third grade, and as far as leadership, I am liaison to language and to be the president.
I'm Sueys Roxanne Mills Brown. I'm also, I'm a councilwoman, education director, and liaison to the elders and the sharing committee.
Earl Capdune. I'm the board member, and I'm the medicine manager.
I'm councilwoman, when on the clock, and I work in the finance department, so, I am the lead on to the Metcon, which is after that, and we own the.
As the chairman, I service kind of low for CMA, it's on all the various committees.
Hi, Casa Jackson, I'm secretary of National Open Tribe.
How you guys doing? Thanks for coming. Captain Henry, I'm the vice chair of the National Open Ona Tribe. Leading on to the natural resources, elders, variety of other things, but thank you guys for coming. Appreciate it.
I'm Chief Earl Mills Junior. I'm new to this job, new to this council, and I try to voice the concerns of the general tribe, tribal members, and thank you for being here, and I look forward to our interactions.
Thank you all for coming. Really glad to have you all. Domingo Texera, councilman. I am also liaison to the enrollment department and liaison to the housing commission. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We are on, I'm councilwoman, and the CEO to the national service unit, our clinic for the tribe. Liaison to tribal important rights and ethics commission.
Let me do something else. Nger Junior, I serve as the emergency management director in addition to a council member, and I'm liaison to the youth council, so thank you for your time.
Yeah, I also, I want to say a minute. Two of our members could be here tonight. I just want you to know, they were kind of last minute conflicts. They intended to be here, but Don Myers, who's been a long time school committee member, and also our newest member, Daniel Rodriguez, he also senses apologies for not being able to be here tonight, so we'll be filling them in, and then in the audience, I don't know if any of our administration staff would like to introduce themselves, but we do have the principal of the Coombe School, Mary Kate O'Brien, who some of you may be familiar with, the new principal for the Quashnet School, Eliza Twitzer, director, I'm sorry, special, yeah, director of special education, okay, Jamie Carley, and assistant superintendent, hope that's where you're at as well, so. That kind of, I think everyone here. Yeah. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Yeah. So. Um. Oh, she's from Mashpee.
Mackenzie Ryan. No, from Enterprise.
And, oh, I'm sorry, Mackenzie Ryan.
Mackenzie.
Okay, so I guess next on the agenda is, again, updates, so, again, hats off to the tribal council and the tribal leadership.
Turn it over to the education director, Councilwoman Mills Brown.
I would like to also thank you for being here today, and I just do want to say, I've been here, I think, going into my, I want to say, fifth year, and the partnership has strengthened every year. It becomes broader and broader, and one thing I say this with great respect, but Patty makes, Patty creates a lot of work for us because she too has expectations. We're up to the task. I appreciate that, you know, because the relationship has grown. It's all directed to our native children, but it also is, benefits all children, and then ultimately our, our shared community. I did actually just write some notes here, and you may have seen that, that document, and during our last, we have quarterly partnership meetings with the district, and they, they, they perceived my arrival here as education director, but we kept those going with the superintendent and the administration. I jotted some notes here. The last partnership meeting, I did mention that it would be beneficial for us as an education department to improve the skills and data that we have, to be able to get non-personally identifiable data on our students. So I listed some of the areas here. I'm just going to read a few. Number of native students with disciplinary infractions, number of native students receiving transportation, number in dual enrollment, alternative education, number in accelerated courses, number in extracurricular activities. In addition to this, I had the opportunity to speak with four of our interns, all, all of whom worked here in the building, but came from the Mashpee School District. And without exception, the students had nothing but positive things to say about their educational experiences. At least one just graduated, and spoke highly of individuals, whether it was the, whether it was a teacher, whether it was a coach, they felt there were high, high expectations. The native curriculum wasn't to par, but we all know that. That's part of the work we do with the district, but they were always encouraged to engage and bring forward their own histories and cultures in the work that they did in their classrooms. So all in all, I just want to say thank you, and we'll keep working. No system's perfect, and that system has been in place, the public school system, for, for, I want to say, more than a century, decades, and it takes all of us to change that really better, and I think we really are working earnestly to do that. Another thing on here is school information. So I think one of the asks, and this is, this is something that we could have asked for along the way, but it really dawned on me that while we do quite a bit in the school system, we're still external and up, kind of outsiders, and as much as we could be a kind of a, not a, I don't want to say an afterthought, because we're not an afterthought, but if we could be included with information about the different school events, so when you send them out to parents, if we could have that information as well. But also, again, we could be a little more proactive, and working from both ends, it would help if we could be included in things such as open houses, parent meetings, just so we, the public sees us, and that we have an opportunity to not only meet with the public as they come through, but also our own parents. And last year it worked very well with the data, the parent consent to share school data, get a lot of documents back from just having that presence at the open house. Some of our goals, I think, too, is, and this goes to, this goes to the development, the growth of the relationship, and it's consideration of native students at every turn, and I don't mean that egotistically, or whatever another term might be, I mean that, that in planning events and planning things, where issues, events, or institutions related to native history, art, whatever it is, be considered so that all, all students can be educated and understand that it's not just in their classroom this takes place, or during Native American month, that things are out there in the public. It's, it's important, and we are a part of, you know, this country, and a very important part of it, along with, with other individuals, migrant movements, immigration movements, and et cetera, et cetera. And then to take advantage of the opportunity to reach out for materials, so, and this, so this is, this is us putting our hands to you to take advantage of the opportunity to reach out to us for materials, information, support for specific aspects of the curriculum and instruction, and beyond. And you guys know, I mean, we do have that great relationship, just as a reminder. We have, we have individuals, not only in our department, but in our, in our operations here in the building, that have networks and contacts and friendships and business dealings with natives from all over the country at every different level that you can think of, starting from the feds down to tribal governments and traditional governments. So, you know, we can, we can provide quite a bit with notice. And then I want all of us to know that, I shared, I just emailed Patty yesterday with a kind of a edited version of the parent consent to share native student data, and so we'll let the district review that and provide their input on that before it goes out to parents from the district. We have a truancy agreement, which began, I don't know, two thousand nineteen, eighteen nineteen, in theory, and Vivian was still here with the court, and we met with their district leadership team, really to talk about truancy, but they kind of backed us up, and we started with attendance, which is the more reasonable thing to do. So we do have a truancy agreement that's in development. I think it's with the district's attorney.
It's almost ready.
Okay, so it's been going back and forth, and I do understand that tribal council has to review it and go through that process before anything becomes final. This is a piece that is to go into the juvenile ordinance, so it's actually, it's quite a big undertaking with that piece also. And then I want everybody to know is that we're working with smoke signals, and we will have a new education website launch sometime this fall, and so we will work to provide links to the different districts and links to, to different things that we have resource-wise, constructed to be user-friendly and more, more appealing to users. And then the last thing I'll say is, on our website now, smoke signals is now providing a link, a YouTube link, to, to the ten-week workshop series that we had last school year, and I think there's one video up there to this point, but it's, that too will be coming. And anything else that we've recorded, which is some of our monthly workshops that we've done for the public. So with that, again, we're always looking to grow and be more effective, so any suggestions or thoughts that anybody has, we're always open to chew on them, see what takes place.
Do you have a minute to just go over the council's, like, collaborate?
Me? Yes. Yes.
No.
Yep, and so the council knows, because they approved it through a consensus, is that we submitted a grant for native student retention, native, native teacher retention, and it's quite a large grant, four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars a year for five years, and they're looking to award six. So I did work with Patty and Lori Dur from the Thelma School District. They were most instrumental in providing input to that grant. I believe the district has four employees, four native employees, now, and two new ones, so six. So that's three teachers.
But he was one's para, was a teacher, but he's also a teacher.
Okay. So one of our males, actually, it's so nice to have a male native teacher, is coming in as a para, will be a teacher, and then we have the custodian, who I'm going to speak to, I'm not sure if he's interested in becoming a teacher, and then we have the secretary in the Quashnet School.
And you have, this is already.
And we have Clayton, who grew up as a science teacher. He went in and took the certification test and passed that, and I think now he may be working on his masters. So the kids gravitate, they did, they did talk about their relationship with Clayton, so he feels all kinds of things in support of, of native kids, and they know that, and as does the custodian at Quashnet School. We're looking forward to recruiting. We have Kaylee Mel Jerry, that's a junior in school, looking for, as, looking to be an early childhood teacher, so we're trying to court and develop some of our native youngsters to look forward to that profession teaching. We have Taylor Rose that just graduated with a degree in early childhood, but we're trying to keep her, but she's, I think her sites are in Boston. So we have to get them earlier, you know, future teachers of America, future native teachers of America, that's how I get in, and look towards that, but it would be, it would be a windfall and a boon if we can get this grant. I don't want to say help, but it was rigorous. But we'll still keep working on that. That will be something we set aside. We will keep recruiting and trying to retain native teachers with cultural competency, competency training, as well as training on, and I know they have to have this class anyway, I think across the country, which provides them different modes of teaching, teaching to different types of learners, but we're going to also hit them with how native students generally learn best, so those two facets of things, and to provide them to support as, you know, being native students in a kind of a huge system, as we see it, we'll provide supports in that manner, too, but we'll keep in touch with those that are still in school, and that's, we worked with Brett. Brett Pels is, is one of the teachers now at Mashpee, and he helps to support some of his education with the agreement, written agreement, that he would apply to one of the eight districts that we work with. And it's just, I'm thrilled, I'm thrilled that he's there, and will help nurture in the best way that we can the complemented skills and what the district offers to me. But yeah, so that grant is something that we're hoping for. It had positions of project manager and an assistant education director. So we'll say, Ms. Patty.
I'd like to thank Councilwoman Mills Brown, the education director, for all the work that she does along with her staff, and collaborating with the school to do the new employee orientation today. I think that was a great success. I think everyone, you know, really appreciated it, and toward everything that went into that, so thank you to the staff for that time. Anything else you need to try?
Maybe say, we're, we're, we're looking at all of our opportunities for students, whether it's, you know, our females, well represented across the board, our students represented, our low-income students, you know, represented. There are so many areas within the school system and opportunities that we want to make sure that we analyze, like, we wonder why there's so many females in our society. Where's all of our boys? They're smart, too. So there's just a lot of digging in, so this is, this information that we want, and we want, you know, so we have our, at our fingertips, a lot of information to then make some decisions on. Because you know this, thanks to them, everybody.
Thank you very much for that information. That grant sounds very exciting, and, you know, my daughter just had Mr. Oakley Mills, our science this past year, and loved him, so I think, you know, I think it's important for representation, being yourself in your teaching and educator, so I look forward to being able to be fair and fair and be and I know we'll keep working towards getting more native teachers in our district. It is important, so.
What will we know?
We should know sometime around, oh, October, huh?
Yeah.
During the fiscal year.
Great. There's nothing else from any of the other council members that you want to specifically move on to our kind of updates for you?
I do have, well, before I share some of our stuff, I do have two wonderings that maybe you can inform us about. So one of mine is housing for native families, and is the housing development, is it Al's little restaurant? Is that continuing to grow? Like, what will, we need to plan on the impact on the district with families coming in? That, that was one of the questions I didn't know if you could answer. And then also with your school, are there future, is there a five-year plan moving forward? Do we expect some kids to be transferring in the fourth grade, or are you, you know, supposed to go four, five, six? Like, some of that planning would be helpful for us, or we try and work at, say, a five-year plan for the schools? So those are two things, the housing development that gets in school, and what happens?
Good comment. Can I answer the housing question?
Yes, as housing liaison, the, the housing development, as everybody knows, at this point is at full capacity. We just, with the housing commission, voted on a new architect engineer to look into building a community building, which is scheduled next for, for to be designed, built, built out for, for the next part of development. We also have some more acreage there, roughly ten acres, that is also going to be looked at for future housing needs, but we are still a ways away from that process as far as voting on it, getting the design, architect, design engineers to, to move to that phase. So that is definitely in, in the sights, coming down the road hopefully sooner than later, because we do, as our community, have a housing crisis right now for the homeless and stuff, so. We're definitely working on it, and hopefully soon to have something concrete, hopefully within this new year of twenty twenty-four.
Do you have a waiting list for the current?
Yes, there is a, a pretty sizable waiting list, yes.
As far as the schools, right now, we don't have any plans to expand, although we are definitely hoping to go up to six in, well, when space is, so right now, we don't have space to expand.
So right now, we don't have space to expand, but when we do, and, you know, it's really hard to say when that might be because, you know, if it means building, then it won't be probably in the next five years. But if somebody said, here's a building. I mean, it's been known to happen, it's possible, you never know.
Exactly, right.
Um, you know, or even if, if things move around in the building and, you know, if things like that happen, then it could be, it could be super. Our staffing is pretty much ready to go. So it really is just a space issue. And if that were to be the case, students would be able to go through six through eight years. So there would be transitioning and stuff. Ultimately, we would love to go to eight, maybe beyond, but that's not in the near term plans.
I'm, I could say.
Oh, yes. So we recently conducted, well, and every year, School Committee conducts an annual family. And we recently, last two years, done students, included students grades five through 12 in an annual survey. The survey is really meant for us to get an understanding of how families in our district perceive the school. I believe Superintendent Thor has recent copies of it as well as.
The other thing I was going to pass out, Lee, this is sort of a journey of our six-year partnership. It has a few pages only because this year's, you know, it's filming. But it is really a nice overview of what we kind of brought this year. And I know we didn't talk about the courtyard of the Quashnet School. But yeah, so the survey, sorry, what, six-year survey?
Six.
Six-year, yeah. So we've been conducting the survey for six years now. And this year, again, it's our second year including students. And so what we're looking for is really how people perceive the school, how they see, you know, do they feel safe in the building? Do they feel represented? Do they feel supported? Are the object, like, do they understand what's expected of them as students? Do parents understand what's expected of their children? And this year's, you know, we're seeing a steady, steady kind of increase. COVID obviously changed some of people's perceptions on certain things. But most recently, and some of the things that I think we wanted to bring to you as the tribal council, because we were a little concerned about one question in particular, you know, do I feel safe in my school? You know, we're trying to understand, from last year to this year, in Quashnet fifth and sixth graders, we saw about a 20% drop in that response. In the middle high school, it was, it was about a 15% drop in that response as well. You know, we spoke yesterday, we had our School Committee goal retreat yesterday. And one of our goals, we really want to dig into this and find out why students are feeling that way in the schools. You know, we, we kind of wanted to also bring it to you so that you are aware of this. And maybe if you had insight, you know, whereas your students are part of the district as well, if there are things that maybe you have insight to share, if you think about this and look at this data. But it's a pretty comprehensive survey. You know, the other thing, we, we really want to make sure people feel represented, diversity is honored and equity provided. There was a bit of a drop also in students this year. High school, you know, we did have a few instances this past year that came up, as we all are aware. And, you know, we're definitely working to address them. And we're not blind to the fact that there's still work to be done. You know, we're very aware that people need to feel represented in order to feel safe. And we're kind of tying together. And I think as a school committee, you know, seeing these hard numbers from families and students that responded, really kind of gave us a direction, I feel like, in a sense, to make sure that we're making the steps towards remedying that and making sure that those numbers change and people have a better sense of themselves. And because obviously that's going to impact how they perform as people. And ultimately, that's what we want to happen. We want positive, we want them to feel good and do well. So again, this, this survey information, this is kind of a recap that we're presented. If you did want to see the full survey, and I'm sure we can provide it, but this recap kind of highlights a lot of the points within it that we looked at as a school committee and felt were important to dig into. Again, if there's any insights that you look through this that you want to share with us, I am more than happy to speak with any one of you or hear those concerns, comments. You know, I feel I see the whole committee that we want to do better and we want to ensure that all students feel natural, is their, their school affairs. And the surveys have about 35 questions on them, so we are capturing them all in here. But when students respond, and this was year two of fifth through 12 responding, and families, they do identify themselves, but that information is never shared beyond me. Like the principals don't know. But what is also helpful for me is there's a narrative section that any student or parent can add their thoughts. That does help inform me sometimes. I go meet with the students and say, hey, you know, because it sort of feels like they're reaching out about something. But it's very informative. What we did include on the paragraph that you received is the very last page, which doesn't really tell you how the native students responded to questions, but it does give you an idea of the participation. So of whom school parent guardians, of those who answered, 7% were native families. Quashnet School, of the families who participated or responded, 9% were Native American families. And then when we get our fifth and sixth graders, which fifth and sixth grade, even our seventh through 12, they're somewhat of a captive audience. So the fact that we don't have 100% participation is a little confusing to me sometimes. Although we do say you don't have to do the survey if you don't want to. I will say at the high school, there was a tech glitch. Apparently you can't all get in a Google form at the same time. But anyway, besides that, we've come up with the idea of maybe spreading it out or giving kids more options so that we're not hitting them on maybe what's a bad day for them. But anyway, fifth and sixth graders, of those who responded, 12% were native students. And, oh, and then of all of the native students in fifth and sixth grade, 63% participated. So that's pretty good. And then you have the same information for the middle high school in terms of our parent guardians. 6% of those who responded to the survey were Native Americans. And then of our seventh and eighth graders, they had an 8% participation rate of all the responders and a 63% participation rate among the native student population in those two grades. And then you see the ninth to 12th graders, which was 8% overall participation. And then 51% of our native students responded. I will say, maybe seniors, but I know we had our 15 seniors and I think I had mine. But like I said, the other thing we found out was messaging was not necessarily the same from every teacher. So some, we have an advisory council of students and they shared that, you know, in this class, she said we can have the whole period to do the survey. And then in another class, that teacher was like, you have 10 minutes and we have to get back to our work. So that's not how I want it to be administered either. We need to be very consistent or, you know, we hold the variables to be non-variables. So we're going to figure that out a little bit more for next year. But there is good information in here. And what we've done with this, we took this information and the actual detailed questions as a big leadership team, which includes the department heads and not just like the senior management team, and really looked at individually and then as a group, what stood out to you? And then tried to come up with action steps that we're going to do to address that. Sometimes it is going back to students to figure out, well, how did you interpret safety? Was it, you know, physical safety, social emotional safety, what was going on at the time? They, we always do administer the last, like, part of February into early March. That is one, you know, fixed piece of that. But there's just a lot of information it gives us. The other thing I did pass out to, which we tend, we try to tie this information to our Plan for Success, which is the district's four-year strategic plan. And so each year, we focus on different initiatives within it, but it all is supposed to overlap in terms of, so the data informs this piece. This data informs school committee goal setting. What we sort of draft as goals as an advent team then flows down to the teachers because we really need to sort of align our goals the best we can. We do give teachers the choice if you have an individual goal that your principal approves, but we're not going to move forward if we have 180 different goals. We really need to be all working in the same direction. We try to guide them and sort of make it as easy a process as possible for teachers.
And one other key to with this survey, because one of the things we recently established with the school committee is Massachusetts allows for a deliberating, non-voting member of the student body to participate in school committee meetings. And there's also a student advisory committee to the school committee. So we recently established that. Our representative is Andrew Kelly this year. Interest in this advisory committee was a little slim, but I'm hopeful that as it starts gaining traction, more students will be interested. But this is a chance for the students to kind of understand, like, what we as a school committee do, but then kind of communicate that to the student body. So with some of this, he was able to be at our session yesterday. And we kind of tasked him with reaching out to the student body and kind of helping to better define what is safety, you know, well, how do they interpret that? And I think I believe, I believe I mentioned this at one point. I don't know if it was a partnership meeting maybe, because I, I am the liaison as well. I should have mentioned that at the beginning, but I'm the school committee liaison to the tribe as well. But so I attend the partnership meetings quarterly. And it would be wonderful to see some native students get into that advisory committee. Because again, representation matters and having different perspectives and different voices, I really firmly believe is how we can inform better decisions and policies to ensure student success. And that's what we're here for. So, you know, again, if that's something that you would, in your dealings, I heard a couple of liaisons to the youth council, you know, if you would like to pass that along, that that opportunity is out there. Right now, it's through the student council. So if they would like to be more involved in this process and having their voices heard, you know, this committee is there and it's there for all students. But that kind of my push, I'm really, I'm a leader in student voice. So I really would like to see all students voices represented. That's what the student advisory committee is for us.
And even in the quarterly partnership meetings, not this year, I don't know why, but last year, I believe, Amaya and Hialeah were sort of the student voice at several of those. And then I don't know why that didn't happen. So we have to be very more, much more purposeful in making sure that they are specifically student. We do the science that partnership meeting. It would be nice to have your middle high school and Quashnet. We hold those meetings in Quashnet, so it'll be easier for a non-driver to get there because they're 14. But we definitely need to have them there.
Speaking of Quashnet, that kind of ties in nicely to the recent projects that has been worked on with Mr. Darius in the courtyard. We have, you have to take me to the 13 rooms, I believe is the working, is that what it's? Is that, is it, is that the name of it? Oh, 13, yes, yeah, yeah. So I believe that's what it's called. So the 13 rooms project where students have worked, I didn't get a chance to peek at it yesterday, but I can see it over the top of the window. They've constructed a weetoo and they have kind of, it looks like a whole station, like throughout the seasons of going through the planting and showing, I believe they're going to have.
Fishing.
The fishing.
Fishing and cooking and tanning.
Yep, so it's, so it's going to be a presence, like a permanent presence in the Quashnet School that was built and will be maintained by the students at Quashnet. So it's something, again, growing up and going to Mashpee, like I, I went to that school myself, but seeing that, I happen to be honest, I think it's amazing and wonderful because as a non-native, being exposed to different cultures and trying to gain that understanding, I think is important, just as important as the native students being able to say, this is who I am. And I, I really am happy to see this come to fruition. I know Mary Kate, this was one of her pet projects as well. And she's promised that even though she's going to Koom school, she will continue to ensure the completion. And Elijah also is going to become the steward of it at the school as well. So it's, it's been really, from what I understand, well-received.
It's really the perfect place for it because it's an enclosed courtyard. So when we're not in school, it's protected. And then it really will be sort of this learning lab for culture. And the student, the native students will be involved with it. And then we'll become sort of the ambassadors for teaching their peers and their teachers. It'll be awesome, yeah.
So that's another very exciting thing that's happened in the past year that I think is wonderful for all of our students. But especially for our native students to be able to say, this is, this is me. This is who I am, this is where I come from, and share that. Because, again, it's important, so. And then. Just, yeah, I kind of covered that.
Lots of papers due. If you have any questions though, when you're reading it, you know, at your leisure, just send an email to me or to Kathy. We'd be happy to further explain anything that you have. Or if you have suggestions because you're reading something and you're like, oh, this is a good idea, please share it. Because we are all about growth and there's many things that I don't know.
We're definitely open to any suggestions. Again, different perspectives, you know, I come from one perspective. You may not totally different one that I might not have seen before and that we could maybe implement policy or something that could better everything for everyone. So please feel free to share whatever.
Superintendent Thor, can you talk a little bit about the Plan for Success, the sheet that you passed over?
Yes, so that, this is, this was developed, actually, I think it was during maybe a COVID year because you have to do a couple of sessions virtually. It was, I think Rossana was part of the larger group of stakeholders, about 25 people got together. And this is really sort of a blueprint for our, moving our district forward. And so you'll see there that there are four pillars of success, or four categories that were focused on portrait of graduate, the diversity, equity, inclusion pillar, our teaching and learning, and Mashpee Connected Community. Then each of those pillars has one strategic objective. So for portrait of graduates to slowly implement our Mashpee connected schools, portrait of graduate. For the diversity pillar, it's to honor diversity, provide equity, and ensure inclusion throughout the Mashpee connected schools. With the teaching and learning, it was fully aligned, teaching and learning pre-K to 12 with our multi-tiered system of support, which is an MTSS framework, which we, prior to COVID, we had done a lot of work with. And we felt that not everybody was sort of in sync on that and it needed to be brought back to the forefront. And then Mashpee Connected Community is obviously, it is a tagline, but it's really how I live this district. And it's really important to me that we are one Mashpee community, not just the schools, the town, or residents. And so that objective is strengthen and grow positive and reciprocal relationships between the district and the community. And our partnership with the tribe is really a bright shining light of an example there. Under the initiatives, which you can read each year, each year, the administrative, the larger team, as well as the smaller team decides on initiatives to focus on. And you'll just see there which years we focused on, which ones. We obviously can't do them all at the same time. Sometimes we continue to build upon. So for this year, you can see wherever it says FY24, either we're continuing on with those initiatives or for the first time, we're making sure that we focus on that. And yesterday, the school committee retreat, they have drafted their goals, they're in draft form right now. But there, everybody's goals have to tie to this document. So that is one way to make sure it is a limited document. We'll be starting the work next year to, you know, look to adjust it for the next period of time. We like that it was a one-page document that is really user-friendly and meant to be alive and looked at all the time. I think that sounded very helpful these past few years.
Any questions?
I just have one question. At, at, at the, at the high school level, for, for our students that choose to go to trade schools, is there any collaboration with your committees and the vocational schools in our area that kids would go to?
Yeah, so our kids, we are, we are part of the Cape Cod Tech, which is the Cape Regional, which is fabulous learning opportunity and beautiful to school. The glitch to that is the hour-long bus ride, which makes it a challenge. I know that Mike Looney, who is our Director of Career Technical Education, has done a great job of connecting students to internships. Like we had a student who interned as an electrician last year. By the time a lot of kids get to be seniors, they met a lot of their core requirements. So they have wiggle room in their day to really get out there in the community and work in sort of real life experiences. So there is definitely, I, I believe they do a survey with kids to sort of find out where their interests lie. with kids to sort of find out where their interests lie, but we do strive to make those matches because I do think currently the high school's structure, which is built from many, many years ago and it's sort of a very large thing to shift, isn't meeting the needs of all of our students right now because it's been this sort of college mindset, which is probably, getting off on my own little soapbox here, but I believe the, the power of those second, those college institutions to influence Washington has created high schools that gear these kids to that as the end, and there's so many other choices. But that will not be my problem to fix. I don't think I can fix that. But we're going to give as many opportunities as we can to kids to explore skill sets that they can then take to college as, you know, like, you know, they have options.
Great, thank you.
And then, I don't know if that was also, but they also have their own school committee that does have a Mashpee representative. It's separate from our school committee. And so, the tech, yes. And I believe they just had a changeover. I don't know if she's been sworn into office yet, but I believe Mary Rose Brady is going to have a Mashpee to be tech.
Good. That, that was, that was actually my concern at that level, because I, I did go to Cape Cod Tech. So, and we do have a lot of tribal youth that didn't make it, you know, to graduation through, through high school at, at, at the Mashpee high level. And so recently, I've been taking on a lot of young men and women over, over high school age and to the trades. Also a union member for the local 385. And so I've been able to help out 19-year-olds, 20-year-olds, get into the building trades workforce. And so it's been really good the last several months. We've got a good handful of kids that joined and hopefully it will have a successful career. But that was my concern is, is that the kids that don't make it that way.
Have you had interactions with Mike Looney?
No, I asked.
Did you have him connected to you because?
That, that would be great.
He is always looking for that and that would be one of the perfect partnerships. And then if you don't already have the connection with the tech's school committee, that's another avenue. But Mike, Mr. Looney's done wonderful programs in our district. But to your concern about students who are there, who do need a representative voice there, Mary Rose Brady, and just so you're aware, that's an appointed position. It's not voted on. The town moderator selects the appointee to be, to be school committee for the Cape Cod Tech. So if there's ever a child, you know, you can pay, if you watch him, I don't know how he advertised, I know he put it out, I believe through the archives, he did put, put it out on Mashpee Message, I know as well, looking for people who would progress. But I'm just saying, if you ever know of anybody who is looking to be representative to that or even to run for Mashpee, I mean, it's never, it never hurts, but that is not a voted position. That's an appointed position selected by the town moderator.
I would definitely like to sit down with him and, you know, and get some memory. Thank you.
Are you, are you the email, just like?
Yes, yes, I'm, I'm actually.
Actually, some of the students from the high school actually helped with the One Room School House project. They did a replica of the old shed that was on the One Room School House, that's at Collins Lot over there. And Tebby Mattis is the stepson of Suzette Peters and I'm Mattis. And he worked on that project and works with his dad, Camille, and, you know, going into that trade as well, as well as the Paul Frunk Health Center of the school, just recently dedicated, you know, to make sure that we're taking care of those as well and other, you know, needs and, you know, technical fields and things like that to get students more interested.
A lot of that, one other element's where the conversation came about, I guess, community, everything. I, I do follow, so I don't know who does your Facebook posts, whoever does. Anytime I see all of that, I always shift it over and share it to the Mashpee Connected Schools page. So just know that I'm trying to make sure, or we try to make sure, that we do sort of cross-communicate. And I know sometimes those I posts get shared, so I think that's one way to make sure. But I do do a Friday communication that I think does, I think, relax the people. Anyway, we can make sure anyone who wants, there's always a lot in that that can be shared wherever Avenue 53 is.
Counsel, would you read it?
Oh, I just wanted to, to comment on the safety question. So my daughter is going to Quashnet next year, her first turn. So I was on the registration page the other day, and when I got onto the website, the first thing that I saw was this, this photo. That's the first, like, banner picture. And it's a group of six boys and they're holding one of the signs, the Thursday signs, and it says, "We are safe because we look out for each other." And when I looked at that picture, my first thought was like, who's "we"? Because it's a group of all boys and they're all, appear to be white, I don't know. But, but I'm just thinking that if, if you're someone who, who already doesn't necessarily feel safe, you might see something like this and that's kind of further, you know, pushing that out. So I'm just, you know, want to call that to, to your attention because I think those representations, even though it may very well have been unintentional, and it probably was, it does, I just.
Well, no, but I agree. Everything is a message.
Yeah, exactly. So that's, yeah, I'm just thinking about those other things.
No, that's valuable and it's, yeah. Okay, well, if there's no other questions, that's, again, we wanted to.
Oh, yes. So we have this year's graduation registration picture for you. I will say, we are missing one, we're missing Autumn Bailey in this because this was before graduations started and I don't know where she was and why we missed her, but. And then I did get separate ones of her, but I do not have the Photoshop capabilities for this. And it was then distorted, but people, this company would say, oh, it's not quality enough. But looking over there, I feel like the one, I have an extra one in my office. I don't see last year's up there. Something in education. Okay, so if you don't have last year's, let me know because I look at, like, where's Shani and Spex. So anyway, if you don't have it, I'll make, I don't know, this is, what do you mean, but, um, last year's graduations.
Autumn Bailey is the grandson, granddaughter of Rosie Hendricks.
I know, I feel so bad that she wasn't in it.
She did get her cupped though, so.
She did get her cupped.
Yeah, man, thank you for hosting us. You know, it's, I, I view this as a privilege to be able to speak to you as a tribal council and share, like, what our work is so that you have a better understanding of what we as a school committee are working and committed towards doing. So thank you for giving us the time to speak to you so candidly and openly. And again, feel free if you have any questions or if there's anything we can do to, you know, increase the voice, the success, well-being of the students. Kind of what we all find out to do so. My email, my cellphone, whatever you need, Brian, I have it. You can use your cellphone for him. I'm open and willing to talk and listen because it's just one of those things that I feel very passionate about. Would like to see us continue to look forward. So thank you.
Face-to-face opportunities, conversation, one helps build relationships. I would, my normal request would be to take a space of attention.
Patty, give me your phone, I'll take it.
Maybe we sort of sit there with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll get you that. That's all the extra privileges you're part of, you know, the system, but everything else, okay.
Along here, I don't know. Whatever you decide, it's your, your, your. Maybe we can hold the.
Although I often take pictures for Patty because she's in them, my mom was famous for, like, the thumb in the front of all of our.
Let me tell you that if Hope was in this picture, she got to look at it.
I do, I have some vanity with photos as well.
You ladies want to hold that?
Oh, yeah, that's perfect. Oh, that's a good-looking root right there. All right, ready? One, two, three. One more this way. You like to have choices. All right. No fingers in front. I know, but she's my boss, so, you know.
She's not supposed to stay almost, just do it. Thank you very much. So, do we need a motion?
Been looking forward. Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.